...safe and where we can communicate together. So I really appreciate it. I'm gonna ask all of our first responders, and I would ask for our veterans as well, would you just stand so we can acknowledge you?
Yeah!
Well, I just killed our mic again. Where's the...oh, there we go. I will hold this in my hand for the rest of the evening and not drop it. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, and I want to thank the people outside. I wish we could have allowed for every single person to be inside. I do, because I know people came here because they want to talk and they want to listen, and I thank all of you for coming this evening. And I'm gonna do my best to answer all of your questions and to talk to you from my heart and my head and tell you what I'm saying. First, I need to find my wife. I want to introduce my wife as well, Debbie. Stand if you would. That is my college sweetheart, 35 years. And we're about to become grandparents for the first time. Tell them to remember how special that is. Before I take your questions tonight, I want to give you some sense of where I'm coming from, the things that have made me who I am. Because all of us have views on issues, every one of us, and it's based on the lives that we've lived. So I want to just say a few things and then we'll turn to your questions. First, maybe I'm stating the obvious, but I am not Donald Trump. I am not Paul Ryan. You might have guessed that I'm not Hillary Clinton. And I'm not Nancy Pelosi. I am Tom MacArthur. Some people call me T-Mac. I drive a black pickup truck from Ocean County to Washington every week, and I represent you in Washington. That's who I am. And I am here to listen to you tonight and to understand your concerns. I grew up in a foreign community. It shaped a lot of who I am. I grew up working on a dairy farm. And I grew up in a family that was different, I guess, by some measures. My mother died when I was a boy. We're probably gonna come back to that a little later tonight. But she died when I was four. And my father remarried a few years later. And the mother that raised me was a progressive Democrat. My father was a conservative Republican. Mom was a Catholic. And Dad was a Protestant. And so the idea of debating ideas...I said to a group of protesters last week, I said, "This is like dinnertime back at home." That was my life. And family has shaped everything that I do. Debbie and I married right out of college, 35 years ago. And we started a family. We had our first child, 1985, Grace. And we adopted our next two children, David and Isabella. David's now 26. He's a youth pastor and a soccer coach. And Isabella lives in Baltimore. She's 20. And my daughter Grace also had a very deep influence on who I am. I think we'll probably come back to her again. She died when she was 11. And that shapes you. That changes you. That was a long time ago, now 21 years ago. But when we talk about healthcare, when we talk about a lot of things tonight, I want you to know where I'm coming from. And that's a big part of who I am. My business life is also a big part of who I am. I was really fortunate. I fell in love with my very first job. How often does that happen? I investigated insurance claims in the New York City housing projects. I grew up on a farm, and then I investigated claims in the housing projects. That was like night and day for me. It was a completely different area from the country to the city. And I loved it. I loved all the people that I met. I loved the interaction. I loved investigating claims. And I stayed in school for kids who had lost both parents to AIDS. That was out of the country. We did a lot with...we've done a lot with wounded warriors and with disaster relief. And we've now given away thousands of wheelchairs in memory of our all distorted grace, because that had such an impact on who I am. Those are the things that got me into the public square. And I ran for Congress because I thought that all of that, my personal experiences, my life in business and how that made me who I am, the way I think about things, the work that I had done as a local mayor, I thought all of those things might make me helpful in Congress, which if you haven't noticed, doesn't work very well. I'm sure you haven't noticed. So that's where I'm coming from. Now, tonight, you're gonna ask questions. I'm glad that, in one sense, this is not a massive crowd, because a lot of people will want to ask questions, and I need to turn away too many without the ability. But tonight, let me just lay out a few ground rules, if you will. I'm gonna ask if you want to ask a question, to raise your hand. And I'll call on you. I see your hands. That's the very first question. See that? That was quick. But not just yet. So raise your hand. I'll call on you. And we have two guys. Where's Bob here? And Jay, where's Jay? Jay over here, and I'll hand you the mic. I'm not setting time limits, but there's hundreds of people here, and I'm asking you to be respectful of your neighbors. If you talk too long, everyone's gonna know in the room. And so please, ask your question, get to the point, and I will honestly answer your question. And I'm gonna ask that we not shout down each other. That's not how we talk in this community. We are respectful. I want to hear from you. I want you to hear from me. And that's what we'll do tonight. And then we'll see how it goes. So with that, you go first. Tell me your name and where you're from. I am gonna ask, and I hope this applies to you, I am gonna ask, I understand there are some people in the room not from the 3rd congressional district tonight. I am gonna ask only those that I represent in Congress from the 3rd congressional district to ask the questions. I think that's fair to the people that have come out.
I'm in Clemente, and I live in Barnegat. So I'm a constituent, very close to year 29. And just off the top of my head, I hope that, another you've been reluctant to have a town hall, because you didn't want hijacked by paid protesters. I can assure you, in Ocean County, we don't have paid protesters. There's no one here that's going to hijack you. Secondly, I would hope that you would have more of these town halls, in-person town halls, because they're very important to us. And we are your constituents and need to hear from you personally, and you need to give us personally. If there are town halls, do it. The third thing I would like to see happen is that you have more of these, so that we can get the people that are by skin, and they leave a bigger venue. Because right now, the country is in crisis. And everybody is...we're scared. We are really frightened of what's going on. So Congressman, I hope that you will heed those recommendations. My issue is the old House of Representatives bills that are in the ballot right now, to eliminate the EPA by next December, to eliminate the Department of Education, to defund Planned Parenthood. All of this strikes me on our feet. And it just is...I'm old enough, believe it or not, to remember when Roe v. Wade entered law, even before that. So I remember what it took to get those passed. So what is your position on those bills that are in Congress or in?
Okay, you said Marianne, right?
Marianne.
Marianne, okay. Those are all fair questions, and I'll try to get all of them. First of all, bills to eliminate the EPA, bills to eliminate the Department of Education. I'm not gonna support those things. Now, that's not to say they couldn't use some work, those departments. They could. They could. And that's not to say that those very departments don't overreach sometimes into areas that we should be controlling locally. But I'm not gonna throw out the baby with the bathwater and get rid of them. And look, I went to Washington to fight for our economy, to grow opportunity here, to make sure that our country is secure, and to make sure our joint base, which is so important locally, but also to our national security, is growing, to support our veterans and make sure we do right by them. I wanted Congress to...to fight for Sandy victims. And although the addiction crisis actually wasn't on my radar when I went, it sure is now. And now I spend a lot of my time on it. That's what I went there to do. I didn't go to do knee-jerk things of the sort that you're worried about. And there are enough of us, Marianne, honestly, that I don't think you have to worry about those whole departments of government coming down. Yes, in the back here, sir.
Hi.
Wait for the mic.
Thanks, Bob. Congressman MacArthur, I applaud your work on protecting streams and the aquifer here in New Jersey for people to enjoy. It's intermittent. But my question has to do with an overarching environmental question of climate change and whether you would...which is costing us more and more in terms of floods and storms, superstorms. And economists have come to agree that a carbon tax, such as a revenue-neutral carbon tax, where consumers and constituents get their share back, but those who live more end up, you know, paying more, and finally unleashes market forces to help determine the energy sources, you know? I was wondering if you would support something such as that, because it will help mitigate climate change. It is very helpful for promoting that.
Okay, well, there's a couple of thoughts there. First, with regard to our environment, I think you have to be ignoring science to not accept that the globe is warming. There's ample evidence. And I don't think we should ignore that. I don't think politicians should pretend that scientists don't know what they're talking about. That said, there is always, in my mind, a balancing that has to take place. We need to preserve our environment. We're good stewards of our planet. We also need to not ruin our economy as we do. And let's never forget that in the last 10 years, no nation on Earth, no nation on Earth has reduced greenhouse gas emissions more than the United States of America. Nobody. And sometimes we beat ourselves up, I think, too much, as if we're the cause of the problem. We have done more in this, and there are other major developed countries in the world that ignore our climate issues. So I think we have to be careful that we don't destroy our economy while others halfway across the world do things that pollute. With regard to specific solutions, that's the balance I look at. I don't want to punish industries. I do want to encourage, when we talk about an all-of-the-above strategy, using all of our energy resources, to use them in the least polluting way possible. And then industry has made great strides in doing that. So I will continue to fight for the broader global ecology issues. Now, let's talk locally just for a moment. We live in a beautiful area. I am on Barnegat Bay all the time. I'm a very active voter. I shouldn't say "all the time." I don't have that much time anymore. But I used to be on it all the time, and I'm on it as often as I can be. Because I love to be out, I love to be on the water. We have fishermen. We have charter boats. We have recreational fishermen that are depending on clean oceans and making sure that we don't ruin that part of our ecosystem. For that reason, I will not support ever a drilling off of the Jersey Shore. That's not where you'd be going. Giving people too much of an economy, it would totally destroy the New York and New Jersey area if there were ever an accident. And I will continue to do things to try to help our bay, which is in deep trouble. I have a lot of meetings on that very issue and what we can do about it. I've introduced legislation called Save Our Bays Act to try to encourage business and homeowners to reduce runoff of fertilizers into the bay. I was a co-sponsor of the reauthorization of the National Estuaries Program. There's only 26 bays in the entire country that are part of the National Estuaries Program. Barnegat Bay is one of them. And not only did we get the reauthorization passed, but we got more money for areas like ours. And likewise, on the other side of my district, the Delaware Valley, I fought for additional funding for ecological efforts there, too. So I'm very focused on both sides of the district and the Pine Barrens in the middle, with over a million acres of pristine territory to protect our drinking water. I just did a tour a week ago at the Toms River Water Treatment Plant, and we talked about exactly how the aquifer works and what its stresses are and what happens when they don't get enough water coming in. So I hear you. Those issues are important to manage. And I saw you patiently over there. Jay? Let's try a different mic and see if it's slightly different.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Reitzan. I'm a 7th grade Landmark teacher. I've lived in Toms River for 48 years. I'm asking if you will vote no for H.R. 610, which sets up voucher systems for schools. These schools are used for children ages 5 to 17, and the voucher system will defund public education. It will eliminate the Elementary Education Act of 1965, which provides equal opportunities in education. It will repeal ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. It is a comprehensive program that helps struggling learners, ensures that there are AP classes, ESL classes, classes for minorities such as Native Americans, rural education, education for the homeless, school safety, which is gun-free school zones. It monitors and has compliance, and there are programs and accountability programs. The bill would also abolish the Nutrition Act of 2012, which is the No Hungry Kids Act, which is standard school breakfast and lunch for our students. This bill has no wording "to protect SM kids," no mention of IDDEA, no mention of fake. Something the ESSA does for children with disabilities is it ensures the general ed curriculum for them. It includes provisions for local educational agencies. It requires states and Title I plans to address how they will improve conditions and learning of inclusive children. It reduces the incidence of bullying and harassment, and its overuse of discipline practices reduces adverse behavioral interventions. I am asking you to vote no on this bill to save our public schools for our kids in New Jersey. They deserve a public education.
Let me say a very quick word about bills and then a much broader word about education. There are thousands and thousands of bills that get introduced in Congress. You've read that one, I haven't. Seriously, I haven't read that one. I focus on bills when they come out of committee, because until they come out of committee, I could spend every waking moment of every day reading bills, and I would get through a tenth of them. So that particular bill, I can't tell you how I feel about all the provisions, but I will say a few things about education, and I think this will give you a sense of where I'm likely to land. First, I had not one but two grandparents who were school superintendents. My mother was a librarian. We didn't watch TV Monday through Friday. We read. I read six, seven hours a day. That's the way I grew up, with a deep respect for education. I studied history and education in college and did all the coursework for education. And then in my senior year, a group of 5th grade students persuaded me, when I was student teaching, that maybe I ought to be a business engineer. And that's right then. I had great respect for teachers, because I know the work that they do is incredibly important. My daughter, Grace, that I mentioned earlier, was a tremendous beneficiary of special education here in New Jersey during her lifetime. And today, actually, I had not one but two meetings at schools. I started my day at the Southampton Middle School and spent about an hour and a half with the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. They were doing a model Congress, and they wanted to talk to me about how bills get passed. And so that was my first meeting. I went from that to Moorestown Vocational School, and I spent an hour and a half or so looking at their special ed program, because it matters to me. And public education matters to me. Now, I met with the New Jersey Education Association. I have pretty frequent meetings with the National Education Association. Actually, they endorsed me for my reelection. And we didn't agree on every issue. Charter schools, for example, I said, "I think there's a place for them. I like the experimentation. I like schools finding new ways to do things." In fact, I'd like to see charter schools inside the public education system and see some experimentation. And where they exist outside, they should have the same accountabilities as the public system. They should be managed the same way. I was asked a couple of weeks ago about my view of vouchers. Vouchers to me are different than charter schools. Charter schools are an opportunity to do some new things without some of the bureaucratic constraints and see how they work. And so I support that. Vouchers are different, because in a voucher system, parents can move their child and the money to any school. And my concern with the vouchers is that struggling schools might have the rug pulled out from under them. And if you don't have funding, you can't fix the problem. Now, let's face it, there are kids, children, that are stuck in failing schools, and if you start badly in education, it's very difficult to pull your way out of that. So I am open, maybe more than you are, but I am open to ideas of how do we help children escape failing schools that are not getting any better. But I don't like the idea of broad vouchers, because I think they ruin the system. And so I will look very warily at any bill that does that. Sir, you know what? Sir, I'm gonna come back to you. This poor crowd, maybe because it's dark back here, I had my back to them. I'm gonna go back here. I'll go right here first. You wait for a mic.
Is this the bad one?
That's the bad one.
I wanted to say thank you for holding the town hall. I used to have to do the town hall.
I'll tell you what, if you don't drop my mic or take it for too long, I'll...
Thank you for holding this town hall and thank you for listening to my question. And also, let me offer my condolences on the death of your daughter to you and your wife. And you're right that these things shape our lives, because 31 years ago, my sister was murdered, so I know that the pain is always with you. And I want to say that I respect and support the Second Amendment, but I don't want dangerous people carrying guns in our community. There is a bill in Congress right now that would enable dangerous people to buy silencers or suppressors, I'm not sure the correct term now, with no background checks whatsoever. Silencers in the wrong hands create a public safety risk and make it harder for the police and the first responders to react quickly to any gunshots, and they undermine our cities' gun violence prevention efforts. Would you oppose any effort to make it easier for dangerous people to buy silencers? And also, I want to thank everybody. This is a wonderfully courteous group.
I'll try not to say anything that gets your ire up too much, but I can't promise you that. The simple answer to your question is I chose not to co-sponsor the bill you're talking about. It actually was a tax credit for silencers. I have done other things with regard to guns, and maybe this is a good time to talk about that. The Reciprocity Act, I am a co-sponsor of that. And at the same time, at the same time that I co-sponsored the Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act, I also called for increased funding for the federal instant background check. And I did that because those two things, in my mind, go together. We, every one of us, has a Second Amendment right to protect our families, ourselves, and our property without relying on the state. And at the same time, we cannot allow guns to be in the hands of criminals or people whose mental illness might make them a danger to themselves or others. And that's the balance. That's the needle we have to thread. How do we protect ourselves or those who shouldn't have guns without infringing on the rights of those who have a right to protect themselves? So I'm always trying to find ways...in the last Congress, I was a co-sponsor of the Protect America Act. Unfortunately, that bill never made it to the floor. It should have, because what it did was two critical things. It didn't allow people on the terror watch list to buy a weapon, and it gave them due process. So that if they were denied the ability to buy a gun and they said, "But I'm on this list accidentally," and error, that happens. There are children on the terror watch list. Ted Kennedy was on the no-fly list for a time by accident. Accidents happen, and people should have due process. So I sponsored that bill, because I don't want to see somebody who's suspected of being a terrorist able to buy a gun, but I also want them to have due process, to get off the list. So that's what I'm always trying to balance with these issues when we come to voting on gun issues. Sir, I think I promised you that I shut this. So some of my...
Thank you for having us on call. Big Wheel in Toms River. Please, for the sake of our country, support a truly independent investigation of... and the claim of wiretapping a Trump tower. We're in a committee led by one party, the president's own party, one party, again, independent investigation.
Let's talk about Russia for a few moments. I was in Eastern Europe last year with the chairman of the Armed Services Committee. And we... And we visited five or six countries that border Russia. Latvia, Lithuania, Poland, Ukraine, Romania. And I met in those countries with the presidents, the prime ministers, the defense ministers of every one of them. And Russia was the subject in all of them. Because of Russia's incursion into Crimea where they just, where they basically took it under a sham election. There are little green men, if you remember, in Eastern Ukraine that were really Russian-trained soldiers. And they're agitating again. There's been more activity there in the past month. And Vladimir Putin is a thug. We all know that. This is a fact. We should be very wary in our dealings with Russia and we should make common cause with the neighbors of Russia that want relief from their actions. It would appear to be pretty credible at this point that Russia interfered with our presidential election. Not at the ballot box, not at the ballot box, but in the media and trying to influence the American people. I think that's pretty clear that that happened. And there are today three investigations into that activity. One at the FBI, one at the House Intelligence Committee, and one at the Senate Intelligence Committee. Now, this is where I probably differ with you. The day may come when an independent investigation is appropriate. I don't think that that day has come yet. And my reasoning is because the premise of your question was that a committee led by one party can't do an adequate investigation. That's not true. There are Republicans and Democrats on both the House and the Senate Intelligence Committee. And I for one want to give them a chance to do their job. They opened investigations and I don't want to just presume they're going to fail it. I think we should give it some time. And if we find that that's not going in a direction that it should, it doesn't stop us from looking for it. But I don't think the people that I serve with in Congress in either party have any interest in protecting Russia. And if they interfered, or as we discover how they interfered, I expect that they'll recommend appropriate sanctions. And I will act on that. So, that's where I am on that issue.
Hello, I'm Barbara Solom, constituent from Sherman on the edge of New Jersey, hard day. I have many concerns about the changes to our government being proposed by the Trump administration and the new GOP-led Congress. But I am particularly concerned about proposed environmental rollbacks that are aimed at slashing programs that improve water and air quality and address climate change. I'm also concerned that the USDA has removed online inspection reports that aim to provide a modicum of protection to animals being kept in research laboratories, puppy mills, zoos, circuses, and other animal facilities. And as I understand it, there are plans afoot to limit the protections outlined in the current Endangered Species Act. What I would like to know from you, Representative McArthur, is where you stand on, number one, these proposed rollbacks to the EPA that would cut their budgets by roughly 25%? Two, the USDA website removals of animal welfare inspection reports? And three, the proposed changes to the Endangered Species Act? Also, our current president appears to be a climate change denier and he has made statements that he would pull the US out of the Paris Agreement on climate change. Are you in agreement with our position?
Barbara, thank you. I'll touch briefly on the environmental, although I talked to that earlier. I'll come back to that. But with regard to animal issues, Debbie and I have been long and serious supporters of the Humane Society. Actually, last year I was given their highest award for efforts in Congress to protect animals. Things that you probably don't read about in the paper, like stopping horse soaring, if you know what that is. And things like that. Just about two weeks ago, I voted against my party, which I do sometimes, by the way. I discovered, I discovered just a week or so ago, that there are only 11 Republicans in the entire Congress who vote with the other side as often as I do. Only 11. So, I don't just vote a party line. I try to understand the issue and I try to apply my judgment and also what I believe the people that sent me to Washington would want me to do. And in that particular bill, the Obama administration had put some restrictions on hunting in Alaska wildlife areas and basically shooting bears from airplanes, shooting wolf cubs in their den. And the bill was trying to haul that back. And I didn't support it. I voted no because I thought, I think we can have reasonable restrictions. Alaska can do those things on their own land if they want, but I was being called to vote on federal lands. And I voted no overturning it. So, I am concerned about animal rights issues. I think how a nation treats animals really reflects the character of the nation. Does that help? With regard to the environmental issues that you're asking about, I think I spoke to most of them. I have not seen any credible bill cutting the EPA by 25%. I can't imagine that I could support that kind of a cut. And I haven't looked at the Paris Accords enough to answer that question, except to know, as I said earlier, I do believe we have to be serious about climate change and to make sure we don't ruin our own economy in the process. And I think we have to be good stewards of our environment. It's the only planet that we have and I think we have to be careful in how we take care of it. And that is what will guide me as I look at these things. Thank you. Sir, in the back there.
Thank you very much. My name's Alan Smith from Fort River. And I'm glad you're a co-sponsor of HR 38. That's a great bill. It goes further than the second bill of 446 that Warren is suggesting. And I'm a concealed carry person in Florida when I go to vacation in my hometown here. And when I come back to New Jersey, I can only protect myself and my own safety. So, I'm glad you've supported it and I appreciate your help.
Well, thank you, Alan. And you know what got my attention on this issue was, you remember the story of Shane, Alan? Remember, she was a young woman from Pennsylvania. She had a brand-new concealed carry permit. And she drove across state lines into Jersey. This is a single mother with a couple of young kids. She got pulled over for a traffic infraction. And when she reached into her pocketbook for her license, she said to the officer, "I just want you to know I have a permit to carry it and I don't want you to see my gun and overreact." She got arrested. She spent 40 days in jail. She was threatened with years in prison, a single mother with young kids, because she crossed a bridge from Philadelphia into New Jersey. And that is what really got me thinking about this, that there has to be a better way of states recognizing the permits that are granted in other states. And so, for me, I will always try to find the balance between your Second Amendment rights to protect yourself and our need as a society to make sure that guns don't get into the hands of criminals or people that have a mental illness that would prevent them from being able to use that gun safely. And I will, I may not always get it to the degree that you want me to, but that is always the balance that I will be looking for.
My name is Stephanie Reguilon. I am a constituent of RIC. I'm a newlywed and I, my husband and I want to start a family one day. And one of the biggest concerns for my, in our lives right now, is the fact that this country does not have any paid family leave. And recently, last month, and you spoke about family earlier, and I think it's really great how big supporter you are of family. Last month, Senator Gilligan and Senator Delora, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, introduced a bill, HR 947 S 344, the Family and Medical Insurance Act, that would introduce, whoa, that would introduce a comprehensive program that would provide 12 weeks of paid leave at 80% pay for birth mothers and fathers, that would alleviate the burden on just mothers for families. And I wanted to ask you if you would support a bipartisan effort to support that bill
I haven't seen the bill you're talking about because it's in the Senate. And so, it's hard to look and see what the cost would be and who's bearing the cost. But let me tell you a few things about the issue.
I have information on that, too.
All right. You can send it on us, I'm happy to look at it. But let me give you a couple of things about this. And by the way, if you watched President Trump's speech last week, he actually made it pretty clear that he would support paid family leave. I thought that's what I heard.
At six weeks only, and this would be a more comprehensive bill, that would be at the cost of just 2/10ths percent.
Nobody can hear you without my voice.
Just a cost of 2/10ths percent as opposed to something that's just six weeks, and this would be 12 weeks, and it would be both mothers and fathers, not just, the burden's not just on mothers. And I think that it's a progressive policy that would allow for families of all shapes and sizes to alleviate the burden of childcare.
I hear you. I think people can hear, so let's, I can tell you I'll honestly look at it. With regard to supporting it across party lines, that's not an issue for me. If I think it's the right policy, I'll support it. I will say this about this issue of starting families. I was at the Joint Base, I don't know, six, eight months ago, giving a commencement address at a cadet camp. And I got talking to the woman who was running the program. And both her and her husband served in the military, two different bases. He's out in the Midwest. And I found out that if you have a baby naturally in the military, both mother and father get paid leave to have some time to bond with the child. But if you adopt a child, as I said earlier, Debbie and I have adopted two of our children, only mom gets the leave. And so, I introduced a bill that subsequently got put into the Defense Bill and got passed out of the House, so it's on its way, that would just give the same to whether you start your family by adoption or not. So, while I'm not looking at the bill you're talking about, I'm certainly open to doing that. Having strong families is the fabric of our society, is good public policy. The federal government can't support everything, can't pay for everything, but we should support good public policy that helps families thrive. And I would look at the bill from that lens. Okay. I will come back to you next. Right here. Yes. You're right in the mic.
Thank you. Hi. My name's Jeff. I live in Pine Beach. I've got a couple of things I want to say. First and foremost, I am a protester and I am a constituent. One has nothing to do with the other. In the last several weeks, several months, I have heard people say that town hall meetings are taken over by protesters and they are hijacked. And I take offense, deep, serious offense. You are a protestant. Thank you. A person is a protestant for whom you do not answer to. So, when you say things like that or allow things like that to be said in your presence unchallenged, that affects me. I am your constituent, whether I agree with you or not. And the way that these things get talked about in the media, the way things are discussed, it is given the impression that just because I am a protester, I am no longer a constituent. I can be marginalized. I assure you, sir, I cannot be marginalized. Said that, in talking about the environment, in talking about the science of climate change, you talk about, and I don't have anything specifically, I don't want to be disrespectful in this, I want to bring a different perspective, okay? Because you have mentioned, and I've heard this before several times, that we, as a nation, have done more to reduce our carbon footprint than most anyone else. This is true, but it is only half the equation. If we want to fix the problem, we have to look at the other half. We did more environmental damage for 150 years than any other nation. But we still have more to make up for. We are part of the reason we're in the place that we are in now. Are we doing better? Yes. Do we have to do better? Absolutely. You talk about family. We are a planetary family. You say we only have one planet to live on. I agree with you. You talk about how important it is to balance how we pay for it versus what do we do about it. I say we don't have that kind of time.
Right.
That's what I want to put out. If you don't respond to that, that's fine. If you don't, I respect that as well. But this is the question I originally wanted to ask. How you all doing? This is my question. What brought me here tonight? In the discussion about Russia, it is not simply a question of did they interfere with our elections. I don't think there's any doubt. There's no intelligence community out there that says otherwise. It happened. I agree with you. It wasn't in the ballot box. It was basically propaganda, you know? And that has effects. And we had only half the country coming out to vote in the first place. Every little bit helps. We have to get to the bottom of it. The other half of that is that the intelligence community says, and is unmerited, and I get that, I get that totally, but it's a big deal. The intelligence community thought is important enough to inform both President Obama and President Trump that Trump was compromised in some fashion, to the degree that we don't know what it is, but we have to know. It is imperative, as a matter of national security, that we know. And we don't have time. If the Russians want it, or if Israel is going to want Hillary, we have to know. You say that one committee can do it. I respectfully say, no. We don't have that kind of time. We don't have the luxury to put it around. We got to get it done. We got to get it done now.
What's your question?
How you doing? My question is this. Part of this process is getting to Trump's taxes. He voted against. He knows you're a candidate and all you're asking for is, that's what I'm going to say. You owe me an explanation. You owe everyone an explanation. In fact, you owe more than simply your constituents an explanation. There's not a person alive in this country for whom you don't have to answer for that.
All right, well, let's start the message. Thank you. Let's, let me be crystal clear here. I appreciate you saying you're a protester and a constituent. I know that. I know that there's not paid protesters. I know you are my constituent. I know that. That doesn't mean that there aren't paid organizers that are out there.
Where's the money?
Let me finish. So, I am here. I am here. I know there are protesters. I know there are people well-meaning with deep concerns. I know that. I respect that. I met with a group of protesters last week. I told you this at the beginning. And I said to them, because I think they didn't think I was going to come talk to to them, because I think they didn't think I was going to come talk to them, I said, this is like dinner at my house when I was growing up.
Constituents, not protesters.
Well, I, I am acknowledging what you're saying, so, so let's get that out of the way. I respect what you're doing, this is America, even more important than any other right is the First Amendment right to free speech, that's the foundation of our country, the Constitution of America. And so I respect that, I respect that you're all here. Uh, with regard to Trump's taxes, I will say this clearly, President Trump should release his taxes because he said he would, multiple times, clear that. So I think the question you're asking is really should Congress, since he hasn't, I think he should, because he said he would, but he hasn't. And I think what you're asking is should Congress either force him to, or just go to the IRS and get them? I know you feel that way, I'm not there yet. It's the same, it's related to the question that was asked before. This is the President of the United States, there's only one time in the history of our nation, only one time where Congress has exercised that right, and I want to see what the FBI, the House Intelligence Committee, and the Senate Intelligence Committee come up with before I start leaping to where you are. I, I hear you and I respect that that's where you are, but I, I, again, I disagree with the idea that substituting a group of unelected people who don't answer to the American people is better than letting the people who do answer to the American people get this done. You're asking for a special, uh, group, a special prosecutor, they're not elected. I, I hear you, but until these committees do their work, I think what you're asking for is premature. Look, I, I accept that you don't agree with me, I'm just telling you my belief on the subject.
Give us a timeline.
I don't have a timeline, because I don't know how long it's going to take for the committee to do their work. But, but I, I, I think we have to allow the process to work. And look, I'm not Donald Trump spokesman, I'm not an advocate for, let's be kind to Russia, I want to get to the bottom of this like you do, and I want to make sure that a, that a country that interfered with our election pays a sufficient price that they never think about doing it again. And so let's let this process work, that's what I think we need to do. I think I promise only here.
Usually I can talk louder, but I can say less. Thank you. My name is Sean Johnson, I live in Lacey. I am a proud member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. So I want to know what you're going to do to protect union rights, since they have been thousands, millions of thousands of rights to work. That takes away all of our protections, and it makes the unions weaker, and unions built this country. My second question is, since Mr. Ryan thinks that Social Security and Medicare is an entitlement, I have paid in since I was fifteen years old, it's not an entitlement, I am now sixty, you're not going to take that away from me, and I'm sure that you will.
Good question. You're only supposed to get one, but you suck in a second, so I'll, I'll answer it. Uh, first of all, I will not support a national right to work law. I have stood with labor, because I agree with you, labor did build America, and if we're going to invest in infrastructure, it's labor that's going to be involved in building it. And I believe people have a right to come together and organize to get a better shake in their wage and, and benefits negotiation. I think, I, I know a lot of people that are carpenters, electricians, laborers of different sorts, I don't know anyone who's getting rich on, on the salaries that they make, it's just people making a living. And you know as well as I do, New Jersey, New Jersey, that's pretty expensive. This depends on our, our taxes, our property taxes, our, our income taxes. So I've worked a lot with labor organizations to try to make sure that they're getting a fair shake, and I will continue to.
Thank you.
And your second question was about Social Security and Medicare, it's really simple for me, this is a sacred pact from one generation to the next. It's today's workers paying in, uh, so that today's retirees can take out. The problem and the stress on Social Security and Medicare is primarily because we have too few people in the workplace. Today, today we have the lowest labor participation rate, the lowest percentage of people in the workforce that we've had since the late seventies. And that's the first and foremost face. There are other things we can look at, but I will not support things that, that interrupt when people have built their whole lives around, and they're getting close to retirement or they're in retirement, I will not support things that erode that, because I agree with you, you paid in, you built your life around that, and you have a, you have a right to expect that your nation isn't going to change the rules three quarters of the way through. Let's go back here.
Thank you Congressman, my name's Rob, and I came down from Mount Royal for this. Uh, my question's pretty broad, and has to do with the budget. The President wants to build a wall, he wants to spend a lot of money on infrastructure, he wants to build up the military and cut taxes at the same time, where's the money coming from?
I've been called a lot of things, but profit is not one of them. I don't know, but you're raising a critical point. Our national debt is now projected to be at twenty trillion dollars in about seven years, six, seven years, twenty trillion, that's the size of our whole economy. So your point is well taken, we can't do it all, part of budgeting is making choices, you do that in your houses, uh, so do I, I did it in my business, you have to, you have to make ends meet, and that means we have to make choices. It also means we have to think about how to grow our economy, so we're not slicing up the same pie, but we're expanding the pie. And nobody can answer your question, nobody. All of the things that are being proposed, they can't all be paid for. And so we're going to have to look at that as a nation, and we're going to have to decide where are our priorities? Where do we spend money, and where do we invest, and how do we grow the economy? And after a life in business where I had to do that to survive, uh, I'm going to be looking very carefully at those issues. Yes, right here.
I'm Carol, I live in Brick, and I have a two-part question. I, I do have a solution to that last problem though, tax Trump and the rest of the people that are not paying their share on taxes. My two-part question is, first of all, I'm glad, I'm really happy to hear you that you believe in the science, and that you do recognize that the globe is warming, and that you, and you also talk about your interest in growing the economy. So, um, I have two parts then. What are you doing to support sustainable jobs, clean, green energy jobs, sustainable jobs? We have, we have one planet, a couple of planets, there's an urgency, we must save it if we want our children, our grandchildren, future generations to have a future. So what are you doing in the area of sustainable, clean, green jobs? Because that's, that's where the future lies, I think most of us agree, not in the fossil fuel industry, fossil fuel industry, there's no future. So, um, and then while you're talking about the economy, will you be building roads and bridges and not walls? We don't need a Mexican wall, we need a wall, a Mexican border. Our roads and bridges are collapsing, the economy, we need jobs, we need roads and bridges repaired and built right here, not on the border, and, um, so, um, tell, tell me what you'll be doing about the collapsing infrastructure, clean, green jobs, and, um...
Okay, I think that was a, I think that was a three-part question. So I'll attack them in reverse. As far as infrastructure spending, I do see that as an investment, and I, I don't know whether we can afford to do the trillion dollars that you hear about over whatever period of time, but we clearly need to make sure that we are the world's leader in the best roads, the best transportation systems, that's part of what's going to keep our economy growing, and we have to pay attention to, to that, and I'll support that. As far as the wall goes, um, I'm not sure that I think that that's the best solution, but I want to make it crystal clear, we have a major problem on the southern border, it's not just people that are coming across, it's, it's drugs. And I met last, two Saturdays ago, with the Narcotics Unit and the leadership of the Tom's River Police Department, and they told me what I've heard all over, in my work as the Chairman of the, of the Congressional Task Force on, on opioid addiction, most of the heroin in the United States, most of it is coming across the southern border. Most of the synthetic drugs, fentanyl and carfentanil, most of that is actually coming from China. But we have to, we have to stop the flow of drugs, and in some cases criminals, across the southern border. Now, we can argue about whether a wall or some other surveillance or something is the best way to do it, I have my own ideas, but I'm not the President. The President has proposed a wall, I'm glad he's proposed something, because I haven't seen anybody else do this in a heartbeat, and they won't tell me. So, so from my perspective, look, I know there's a lot of controversy about a wall, I think that we have enough smart people that are trying to, to figure this out, that will find, if we have, if we have the political will to try to get some control over our southern border, I think we'll find the best way to do it, we'll figure out where a physical barrier is best, we'll figure out where surveillance is. There's a lot of mountainous areas where we can't have our wall ready going up now, we're going to have to do it differently, but we've got to get control of the southern border. And then I think your other question was with regard to clean energy jobs, I want to be clear, I, when I talk about all of the above energy strategy, I know some of you will disagree, I imagine you'll disagree, for me, that includes all of the below. So I don't think fossil fuels have no future, I don't. I think that we can responsibly use the resources we have, including natural gas, including other things, and I think we can also at the same time move to things like wind, which the federal government does support some efforts in moving to wind. Solar maybe can get better, but I believe that energy security is national security. I mentioned I was in Eastern Europe last year, and one of the things I noticed was fascinating to me, the countries that did not get their natural gas from Russia were much freer in their criticism to Russia. And the ones, like, like Poland for example, the ones that depended on Russia for energy were much quieter than us. They were nervous, but they were much quieter. Energy security is national security, and I believe we can do what you're suggesting, move towards green without destroying the other industries that we have available to us.
Representative Union.
Sir.
My name is Charles Stromoski from Scranton Township, I'm backtracking. Uh, since the inauguration, President Trump has had foreign dignitaries pay to stay at his hotels in Washington DC. He's refused to divest his business holdings into a blind trust. He charges the Secret Service to rent space at Trump Tower, he has doubled membership with healthcare in Mar-a-Lago, it's worth a pay. Do you believe he is violating the Emoluments Clause of the Constitution?
The short answer is it's a fair question, and I don't know, but we all, everyone is watching this, everyone is. I'm not, I said this before, I'm not Donald Trump's spokesman. Donald Trump actually doesn't answer to Congress, Donald Trump answers to you all. And it's perfectly legitimate for you to make those issues known, but, but I didn't go to Congress to either defend or attack everything that the President does, whether I agree or disagree. I said to you earlier, I think he should release his taxes, he said he would numerous times, I think he should release them. But that doesn't mean I think it's Congress's role to, to try to get at all of those issues. We have...
If not you, then who?
If, if these issues, remember, we are briefly, we're just into this new administration, the President has made some efforts towards what you're describing, I know people aren't satisfied with it, but he's made some efforts at insulating himself from his real estate companies. Folks, I just, oh, you're asking a question, you can disagree with my answer, but I'm telling you, I did not go to Congress to fight with Donald Trump on these issues. Okay, I hear you, I hear you, and look, I am always watching, I'm watching, I was watching when the ban went into effect to make sure that it was, and it didn't last long with the courts, but I was watching to make sure it didn't, uh, uh, do things that I felt were inappropriate. When the President has, has started going after criminals that should be deported, I'm watching to make sure that we don't start breaking of families and sending the wrong people out to not violate the law. So I am watching those things, when I disagree and I think that I can make a difference, I will. When, when I was running for reelection in Congress, I had no problem saying when I disagreed with, with Donald Trump. I, I'm telling you, I'm not his spokesman, you may want me to act now, my guess is you weren't thrilled that he got elected in the first place. And I am going to give this administration a chance, and I'm not going to jump on everything that you may be on this floor. But I'm watching, and it's, uh, nobody, nobody is above the law, nobody. I will remember that, and I, I appreciate your reminding, I know this strong feeling about this, nobody is above the law, but I also want to give, for the sake of our country, our new President a chance to succeed. This is one of the, this is one of the mistakes we made. This is one of the mistakes we made when President Obama was elected. People did not really, some people did not really want to give him a chance to succeed. Look, I didn't vote for him, but I thought he should have a chance to succeed. Now it's just the shoe is on the other foot, and people that don't like this President, I think, are jumping very quickly. And so I think we've got to give it time, I really do. Who'd I say? Oh, you, that's right over here.
I don't need a microphone.
No, 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 wait for, wait for the mic, wait for the mic.
I'm a former teacher. Who is very concerned, I'm a senior citizen, I am very concerned about our grandchildren, we do not have time to see how much more damage he can do prior to the executive order. If he keeps signing the executive orders, it'll be too late. If you are a man of integrity, you can't stand there and tell us, and I say you wasn't, I still respect for a former teacher, a senior citizen. If you are a man of integrity, you can't possibly... you can't possibly be serious to think that the Republicans are going to determine whether there was collusion between the Trump campaign and Russia. We don't have time. Let us have a special conversation. If you're really for a better society, you wouldn't disagree about fossil fuel. If you were really for unions, you wouldn't be for charter schools. If you were really for compassion for people, you would be for Obamacare. As many representatives who do this. So I do appreciate you doing this. Be serious.
Tell me your name again.
Republicans aren't going to investigate Trump because that's their political future. Please have some guts.
Tell me your name.
Nina Daughtry.
Let me tell you a story. And this was a very important lesson for me early in my life. I mentioned that I was an investigator in the New York City housing projects. I investigated claims. And the very first accident, auto accident, very first one that I was allowed to investigate myself was a simple collision of two cars in an intersection. And so I had to go figure out what the truth was. Because there's, you know, there's one answer, the truth, what happened. And I interviewed two witnesses to that accident, totally disinterested. Neither of them knew either person in the car. And I took their statements, their written statements. They could have been on different planets during that accident, based on what they told me. They could literally have been in different cities witnessing different accidents. Neither of them lied to me. They believed what they believed was the answer, the only possible way that you could see it. And that's what they described to me. Nina, I accept what you're saying. I don't have a doubt in my mind that you believe every word of it. But I'm here to tell you that there are people with integrity, forget me for the moment, there are people with integrity in this room that don't see what you see. So what do we do in a society? You mentioned a lot of issues. The Affordable Care Act. I'm shocked that hasn't come up yet tonight. But what do we do when people who see things totally different want to see society go in one direction or another? And I have a modest proposal for you. And this is the way I try to live in Congress. The majority and the minority should actually work together, work together, and both sides should have an imprint. Now, the majority, the majority by the will of the American people should set the agenda. That's what I believe. But one of the mistakes I saw, I see it now, and I saw it in the last administration, is the minority is not given much space at all to imprint that agenda. And one of my biggest concerns with some of the things I see moving through Congress is that the minority has really no say, except to object. I don't actually think that's good for the American people. And so, look, I'm one person. I'm one person out of 435 in Congress. But I started this two years ago and I still do it. I entered Congress on the Democratic side of the House. I still do that. And I spend my time at the beginning of my time on the floor, talking to my colleagues on the other side of the, it's not just a show. Nobody notices anymore. I do it because I want to have relationships. Debbie and I had dinner last week at a friend, John Delaney. He's a Democrat from Maryland. His wife, April, is friendly with Debbie. We have got to get past just, I see it my way and you see it your way and we can't do business together. That's not for Americans. So the only thing I can pledge to you is I don't just vote the party line. I try to, I try to find the intersection of what I believe and what I think you want me to do. That's not always easy. But that's what I try to do. And I try to develop relationships with people on the other side so that we can actually work together. I don't introduce bills without a Democratic co-sponsor. Because I want what I do to have some bipartisanship to it. And I mentioned earlier, I'm a voter. I love to be on the water. In voting, if you turn the wheel on the boat just one degree even, just one little degree, over time and distance, you end up in a very different place. I am trying to turn the wheel a degree or two. I'm trying to end up in a different place. But you've got to realize that part of the reason it doesn't work, Nina, is because we've got this system where Republicans and Democrats do not really work together at all. And that's what we have to change. And I think I promised you the next question. How are we doing? I've got all night's lives with me, so I don't have to go anywhere. I don't want to wear you out. But how are we doing today?
Thank you, Congressman. My name's Mary Byden Reynolds and I've been a resident of New Jersey for the past 28 years. Just to comment, I think that despite the very painful environment we're seeing throughout our country, there is a silver lining that meetings like this are happening across the country and people are engaging in our government. I am very concerned about the repeal of the Affordable Care Act. We really, you know, we are not hearing anything from Republicans or Congress on what is going to replace the Affordable Care Act. I know for a fact that over the last three years, federally funded Medicaid expansion saved New Jersey $1 billion and it created 24,000 jobs. It also allowed health care for elderly people who were working citizens who couldn't afford health care. And it also allowed people to get more mental health treatment and more behavioral health treatment. So if the ACA is repealed, how is New Jersey, our beloved New Jersey, going to come up with $1 billion to continue these services?
Look, this is probably the issue of our time. Health care is nearly 20% of our economy. It affects every single one of us. And I want you to bear with me because this is going to take me a few minutes to tell you how I approach this whole question. First, I mentioned two things tonight that have shaped my life a lot. The mother that brought me into the world and died when I was a kid. She got cancer, bone cancer, not long after I was born. And she died when I was four. I have one memory of my mother. And, which I won't share tonight. But I will say this. My father did not have insurance when my mother died. And I watched him work three jobs my entire life. I don't ever remember my father not having three jobs, paying off medical bills, which he never paid off. I went off to college. My mother died when I was four. I went off to college. And finally, when I was away, somebody paid off the last of my mother's medical bills. That was my entire upbringing. My father had no insurance. I mentioned my daughter Grace. She lived 11 years. We had over $1 million of medical bills during that time. Now, I had insurance. But there's a lot that doesn't get covered. There's deductibles, there's copays, there's things that aren't considered covered by insurance, adjustments to houses, all of those things. And when she died, I had no money. No money. And so I have been on the other side of health care. I have seen what it's like to struggle with bills. And before you get into any policy, I see that. This issue for me is not about politics. It's about people. It starts with that. It's about people. And so, talk about, let's talk about the Affordable Care Act. It's not all bad. Even Republicans, I think, if we're honest, you can't say everything in it is bad and should be thrown out. It's the first time we've gotten coverage for young people up to 26. It granted coverage for pre-existing conditions. It's covered people that were never insured before. You mentioned it previously. It's about a half a million people in the Medicaid expansion pool in New Jersey. And it's hundreds of thousands more that are in the Affordable Care Act marketplace. So it's done some things that have helped millions of people. It's also hurting millions of people. And it's hurting people because premiums and deductibles are going sky high. The average premium increase in the individual exchange, the Obamacare marketplace, has gone up 37%. 37% since 2014. The average deductible under the Affordable Care Act in the individual marketplace is $7,500. It's almost like not having insurance. So, so it's done some things that are good. It's done some things that aren't working very well. Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. You can't just applaud when I say something like... But it's not that productive sometimes. So this is how I'm approaching it. First of all, I voted no in starting the process because it was going too fast. And believe me, that's not that popular in my party in Washington. I was one of nine people that voted no. There were enough of us to stop it from starting when we started. We only needed 23. And leadership peeled off the rest one at a time, one at a time, one at a time. And they came to me too. And I said, "Don't waste your time. I'm not going to change my vote." I voted no because the health care system is too big to try to fix in a couple of months. So the things I'm looking for, and I can tell you tonight, I don't know how I'm going to vote on the bill. I haven't seen the bill. Nobody's seen it except the members of that committee. And they don't have the copies of it. They have to go to a vault. All right, well, at least tonight I'll read it tomorrow. I did read the leaked version a week or two ago. But I certainly, but I certainly am aware of the provisions. And these are the things that I'm looking for. Number one, it's got to cover young people up to 26 and cover pre-existing conditions. It has to cover that. Number two, it can't pull the rug out from under the working poor. And that's the reason it was expanded in the first place. I had a long discussion with our governor a couple of days ago. And I called to ask him, I need to understand what the impact is going to be in New Jersey if this gets frozen or cut off in the next couple of years. And he gave me pretty dire predictions about what happens. So I will look very carefully to make sure whatever happens with the Medicaid expansion, it doesn't pull the rug out from under those people. And with regard to the marketplace, that's probably the group that's affected the most. Because think about it. 65% of Americans are covered under their employer-sponsored health care. Another big group is covered under Medicare. Another big group is covered under TRICARE, the military care, and VA care. And then there's regular Medicaid. And then there's programs like CHIC for children. When you're done with all of that, there's about 21 million people that are the focal point of all of this debate. If you put aside things like pre-existing conditions and 26-year-olds, the bulk of the question is around these 21 million people, 11 million in the Affordable Care Act marketplace and 10 million in Medicaid expansion. It is not fair to put all of the burden on the 21 million most vulnerable people in this situation. They're not poor enough to be on Medicaid. They're working. But it's a struggle to pay for health care. And I'm telling you, I'm not telling you how I'm going to vote. But I'm telling you honestly, I don't know how I'm going to vote. And I meet now because I was elected the chair, one of the chairman of one of the caucuses in the Republican Party, represents 54 solution-oriented members. And because of that, I now have lunch with a speaker every week with the heads of the other two caucuses. And I have made it crystal clear that if we pull the rug out from under the most vulnerable, I can't support that. And that's what I'm fighting for, to try to make this a better. And it has to be okay. I do want to leave you with that. The status quo is not supportable. It's not sustainable. The system is broken. And we've got to get... Before you ask, I'm thinking maybe a couple of more questions. Because we've been talking for quite a while. As I said, I can stay all night. But I don't want to keep you all night. So why don't we say two more? I see you and I did promise you a question. And right here in the orange shirt, we're going to do, that's going to be the order. We're going to end with a bald guy. Right here.
Oh, shh. I want to start off by saying that I am not here to attack you at all. And in fact, I want to thank you and your office for helping us. My husband is a veteran, 100% disabled. And I can't thank you enough for all you've done for the vets that are out there. But in our case, we have some special circumstances. And one of the things, we have five children, but our two sons. And we spoke about families. So this is why I feel the need to bring this up. My two sons are not biological. Or are they adopted? However, we've raised them since they were, one was 12 and the other one was 11 years old. And they're not, they're, we, he receives a check, but they still live at home. We support them. We receive no monies for them. My son cannot partake in a GI bill for his education. They're our children. There are conventional families and then there are non-conventional families. And our family is a non-conventional family. We love our children with all of our heart. They're our sons. And no one can ever take that away from us. We've been claiming them on our income tax since we've got, since they came to us. They write in my husband's health insurance through his job. And I'm so hurt and disheartened that they're saying that they, they're not recognized as our children. So, that being said, I know there are laws. And I also know that when we have laws, that they're meant to be amended. So I would like to figure out a way to amend these laws saying that only biological children or adopted children should receive monies and benefits. Because he's their father. So, and again, that's one issue. And the other is, I went back to college after many years and started a career that I had to resign from because my husband had suffered so badly with PTSD. I have to care for him 24 hours a day and I'm with him all the time. In fact, he couldn't come here tonight without me. I had, I was in a surgery center today. So I had an endoscopy and I'm still here. A little shaky, but here. I can't receive monies for caregiver allowance because my husband was in the 9/11. That's another thing that has to be amended. Post 9/11, how is that fair? There's so many veterans out there that are indeed of these benefits. And why we're not receiving them? Because they're somehow, somebody has decided, well, this person doesn't deserve it "Well, this person doesn't deserve it because he did not, you know, he was in a different state." So those are some of the issues. Believe me, there's a slew of them more that we're working on. And, but again, I want to thank you. Your office has been wonderful and have helped us to this point. And I hope and pray that I can work with somebody to try and figure out how to amend these laws.
Well, first, I want to thank your husband for his service. And we're right to applaud people that have served our country. When you sign up to go into the military, you sign up to go wherever, whenever. You don't know how that's going to go. You don't know if your life's going to be changed forever from that. It's why the two people standing next to you actually are both full-time focused on veterans issues. Bob Smythe and Jay is a wounded warrior fellow at my office. And they both spend all their time on veterans issues. I'm glad to hear that you're already connected to my office. But what I would encourage you to do, not everything can be solved by me standing in the middle of a room talking.
Absolutely not. I would never expect that.
And I think issues like this, we've got to get into the details and see other areas where we can help here. And I would make this offer to you and to everyone in the room. While I try to influence laws that get made in Washington, the thing that I can often do most immediately and most effectively is help a constituent with a claim. And we have now opened thousands of claims for people that are struggling with the Social Security Administration or the VA or a Sandy claim. Often, it's a money-related issue. We've now recovered, I'd say four million. I was corrected this morning, it's actually a bit over five million that we've recovered for constituents. But it's not always about money. Sometimes it's about getting somebody medals that they earned in the military. Sometimes it's about, I recently had an opportunity to help a young boy be adopted by his father. He's terminally ill, and he doesn't, he can't wait for the FBI to do their clearance. And so we helped him get that done and get adopted. So there are things we can do in my offices. And what I would encourage you to do, and everyone here is, let's sit down and let's see if we can help you with some of these issues. I don't know yet.
Well, thank you. And I did not mention, but my youngest son is, he's a disabled adult child. So again, there would be, it would open up the doors for so many benefits for him if they would just recognize him as our child.
Well, I will try to help you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I saw, I remember you now. Here's what we're going to do. I know I said two more. I also saw some people come in from outside. Did I see that correctly? It's cold, okay. I'm going to ask you to be patient. I'm going to allow a couple of other questions from people that were waiting outside all night because they do it, and we should do that. But who was the woman back here first? Yes. And then we're going to come back to you. If I go up, sorry. Yell out if I'm not allowed.
Congressman McArthur, I truly am thankful that you held this meeting because it has helped to, I think, recolor my opinion. And you seem like a very rational, compassionate man. Unlike Mary Ann, our first woman who spoke, I too am so frightened by what's going on. And again, I feel that the First Amendment of our Constitution, freedom of speech, has truly impacted in a negative way our politicians in Washington. And I feel that many of them have been silenced by the word "Republican" or "Democrat." And I heard you say many times tonight that you go with your heart, with your mind. You're not just, you don't just have this allegiance to the word "Republican." And I applaud that. But what is, what is the sense that you're getting from your fellow politicians about what's it going to take for people to say, "Okay, we have got to put the brakes on this?" Because I wake up every morning, there's another red flag. And I'm so frightened. And I understand there's a process. I truly do. But what is the sense, what are you hearing from your fellow politicians? I can't believe that this chaos is acceptable, that this... Because I think the administration that's in the White House now, I understand it's very different. I understand why it happened because of the behavior of Congress for the past eight years. I think they have to work together. You're right. What Mick Jagger said, "You can't always get what you want, but you just might find you get what you need." If we can just come together, as you have said many times tonight. I mean, do you sense that this is going to happen? Happen if you make it happen?
Alls I can do is do my best and do my part to make it happen.
But what's the feeling? What are you hearing? I know you're hearing silver.
Fair enough. Look, we had, we had a seismic shift.
To say the least.
We had a seismic shift in substance, maybe even more in style. Maybe even more.
Yeah, I think more.
Over the last couple of months. So everyone is trying to figure that out. And there are encouraging signs, I think.
Tell me what's yours.
We're addressing issues that need to be addressed. I think that's encouraging.
Give me an example.
And, well, we're addressing, we're addressing where the healthcare system is going. Now, you may not like the answers, but we are asking the right questions because if we don't do anything, the people currently benefiting from the Affordable Care Act will stop benefiting. Because healthcare insurance is a thing that works. So we're addressing, we're going to tackle tax reform, which I think can help our economy grow again.
But if this chaos is allowed to continue?
I hear you. Let me finish. Let me finish. I can see that this is a deep concern to you. Alls I can do is say that I will do my part. And if you don't think I'm doing my part, then you'll send somebody else in to do their part. And that's what has to happen across the country. We need to get people, we need to get people in office that are willing to think for themselves and represent their people. And alls I can tell you is that that's what I'm trying to do. Didn't forget you in the orange. Maybe we'll still end with you. I'll go to a few people that were outside.
All right. Well, thank you, Congressman. My name is Mark Callahan from Bagel. We've actually met before because I was one of those protesters and was also a constituent. So thank you very much for actually having this. I was one of the people pushing you to have this. So thank you very much for that. I do want to start, before I ask a question, just a comment about some of the answers that I heard from you this evening. One of the things, when the discussion was about the southern wall, you brought up that a lot of the manufactured drugs now are coming in from China. I believe that that is a country that does have a wall. How does that work out for that? That's a personal question thing, sorry. But another thing I heard earlier was that you actually said that the president answers to us. We don't have a very specific person that we can talk to that's going to come into our daily work. So, you know, our president actually is supposed to answer the Constitution, and it's our representatives that actually answer to us. So again, that's why I thought it was so important that we could have that. Now, as far as my question goes, I know you did already bring up the ACA. But the Republican proposal was released just as you began tonight. And two things really did just jump out at me that really do have me frightened. And you did address one of them. You talked about a Medicaid freeze. And that is one of the things that is proposed in this, is that a Medicaid freeze is effective in 2020. Now, that would eventually put a cap on the number of people that could enroll in that in any state. And with New Jersey being a very populous state, that is definitely a concern. The other thing that has me probably more frightened than anything else is that one of the things that's proposed in there is an extension of the health savings accounts, where they will actually, they will go from six thousand dollars up to thirteen thousand dollars. And while I know that that does take a lot of burden off the federal government and paying any kind of a subsidy for people's insurance, there's also been studies out that say roughly fifty percent of the population wouldn't be able to afford a two-thousand-dollar charge to fix their transmission. So if they can't do something like that, how are they going to go ahead and fund their own healthcare by putting that into a fund?
I've asked that same question of our leadership, that there are people that use payday lenders to buy tomorrow's groceries. So the idea of putting away money for healthcare is, you know, potentially a pipe dream for those people. And so, I think we have, not that we shouldn't do the health savings account. They're a great idea, for the federal government to give people the ability to save more of their income, shield against taxes for future healthcare. There's nothing but good in that. That's good public policy. It just doesn't answer everything. And I agree with you there. There are people that need more than just a health savings account. With regard to this freeze, let me tell you where we started in this discussion. About a month ago, the debate was about whether we would cut it off, not freeze it, cut it off in two years. Basically have the states on their own for Medicaid expansion after two years. And some of you may have read about leaked conversation at a Republican retreat. And there were three or four people who were quoted in dozens of articles that were leaked from that. I was one of those people. And the reason that I got quoted, I guess, is because I was expressing concern about pulling the rug out from under people. Giving them two years' advance notice that you're going to pull the rug out doesn't really solve the problem. It's still pulling the rug out. We have gone from cutting it off after two years to now we're talking about a freeze, where new people could come into Medicaid expansion until 2020. And the question still is, what happens to them going forward? If they can come in until 2020, but the states are only getting the normal Medicaid match, which is fifty percent in New Jersey, it's the lowest in the country that it can be, it's fifty percent, that's a problem to me if they revert back to that. That's what I talked to our governor about a few days ago. The state cannot afford to, when we were promised we'd get ninety percent forever, the state cannot suddenly afford to have these people at fifty percent. We don't have the money for that. So that's going to be now what I go back to DC with. What is the freeze need? If we freeze at today's rates, and, but the federal government pays ninety percent going forward, I can live with that, actually. Inflation, medical inflation will be on the states to figure out, or they'll have to figure out ways to get more efficient. It may not be perfect, but we have a mess, and we have to accept, we have to accept some realities. So I could live with a freeze as long as the federal government continues to pay ninety percent. If we do a bait and switch, you know what that is? Where the federal government promised ninety percent, and now after the states have acted, we yank it away, then I'm going to have a problem. And I don't know when I'll do that. I'm going to look at the whole bill and try to weigh all of these things. But we have gone from cutting it off in two years to now having a very different discussion about how to help the states continue this quanter. To me, that's progress, and that's what I'm hoping for, that we get a better bill as a result. So, people, who was outside? All right, sir, I'm going to go to you next.
No, no, I do appreciate...
Let me say a word about that, even before you ask. The police and the fire department have been marvelous tonight. But they could find... Let us, not because we want to keep anyone out, but because the building's capacity is only what it is. And we don't, we don't want anyone to be at risk. So I'm sorry it was cold. All right, well, let's go, sir, let me hear your question.
Pat Carter, Marlton, New Jersey. My question for you is, all the discussion about the ACA, let's try one simple thing. Let's make, let's make the penalty costlier than having insurance. Okay, let's keep demanding. And make the penalty for not having insurance more expensive than not having insurance. We need, that's how you fix the healthcare problem. Everybody must have insurance. Keep demanding. That's, that's, that's the thing. And it's distressing that, you know, you want to let twenty-seven-year-old guys run around without insurance?
Yep.
Because it's free. That's ridiculous. That's why our healthcare system, is it to fix and to tip?
Well, with respect, let's talk about actual dollars. Healthcare for a family of four is eighteen, twenty thousand dollars? Twenty-two thousand?
Thirty-eight.
Twenty-five, thirty-eight? It's all over the board, but it is, it is so expensive that just penalizing people to that level, it doesn't fix the problem. It just, I think it actually makes the problem worse.
Would rates come down if everybody were in the pools?
I'm not sure about, I spent thirty years in insurance. I spent thirty years in insurance, and we have to get the cost of healthcare to come down.
Right.
That's just the cost of insurance. So that's, and that's been one of the areas that hasn't gone well. We haven't gotten the price of healthcare down. So, all right, we have, you have been so patient. I will be honest.
This was the first person in line. He was exhausted. He's been to your office three times. And I'm going to ask his three questions for you because he doesn't even have any...
Okay.
We have beautiful pictures of you and him, by the way, together. But I need you to do what he's asked three times.
Okay, let's see.
I would frame that in that we should have been following up. And as a mom of a young man with disabilities who has love energy issues, I should have made sure he followed. My son, Jameson, has mitochondrial disease. And he wrote you about three and a half weeks ago. He wrote, and he asked again for the third time for you to please join the House mitochondrial Caucus. We did get a message. I finally got a return call the other day. And unfortunately, I have to run over to the husband and put the phone number. So I don't know who left her office. I finally called. So I can't call her back because I don't know who it was. And it was a girl, and it was a son. So these are James's questions. Because we have no one in Medford, where I was born and raised, there were five children when you were elected. Five people with mitochondrial disease. Now, there are two, Jameson and one other child. Three of them have died in four years. So we are coming from the heart. We are coming, I am coming from a lost parent who is about to do the house because of our revenge. If I don't do that. Another first question, will you please join the House mitochondrial Caucus? And would you please volunteer to take a leadership on that? If you were a special needs parent, you've got to know what it's like. And we need a cure for New Jersey. We say they don't have a cure. It's rare. And you were so grateful that you didn't, that you voted against, you know, for the ACA. But we need you. She's waited in line since three-thirty. And I need you to commit it two times a year. And it will affect our vets because so many of our vets are coming down with mitochondrial disease. That's the first ask. My second thing is, I work, I had a great job. My husband is a nurse. We have a very good annual income. My employer-sponsored health insurance last year, I paid three hundred and forty-eight dollars every two weeks. That's almost seven hundred dollars a month out of my paycheck for our health insurance. And then another, almost fifty for dental. And then we had prescriptions. Yeah, my out-of-pocket prescription and uncovered medical expenses last year were thirty-eight thousand dollars. Thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I'm still paying off seventy-five thousand dollars of my three-million-dollar hospital bill. What are you going to do to help people like my husband or your middle-class, at limited, God-forsaken stake? I need to know if you are going to vote, first of all, that you are going to make sure that that bill is read and vetted before you vote on it, and that it's going to get the budget announced. We have to do it right in a five-person way so that everybody gets heard. And second, third is, what everybody should do about Medicaid. He came over for our insurance on January thirty-first. In that time, he is now on a straight horizon in Medicaid. In that time, he is now on straight to horizon Medicaid. So far, they have refused to cover seizure meds. That was a three-week-long, every-week argument. And finally, they covered it. Now refusing to cover his oxygen and his fentanyl machine. I don't know what else to do. Nobody takes this insurance. He can't go out of state. He's a rare disease. How are we going to fix these kind of problems to the hard-working people like us? Hard-working people. I, I shouldn't be tired. I have 32 years in my job. My husband should be tired. We need, we need people who have jobs, who are getting burned in medical expenses. We are the ones that need the help. And what are you going to do to help us?
Well, joining the caucus is... I, I, and I appreciate the emotion. I have been there.
I know.
I understand how challenging it is when you are facing a bottomless pit. And, and how do you, how do you deal with that? I would like, I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about the disease and about the caucus. But joining the caucus, I certainly would be happy to do that. I'm a member of the rare disease caucus. And these caucuses for everyone else, they're opportunities to educate members of Congress about a particular issue so it doesn't get lost in the budget bands. Because a lot of this comes down to funding. And you're asking what I'll do. Well, I, I think that that is exactly what every member of Congress should do. This has to be about people, not politics. Not about party, about people. And so, I appreciate you sharing. I will keep you in front of me as I deal with the healthcare. As I read the bill that has come out. And, and if there's anything we can do on the constituent side, as I said, with dealing with Medicaid and some of these other things, that's a conversation we have to have separately. But if we can help you, that's why my offices are there. And so, we'll talk more. I see Julie's sitting right next to you. Standing right next to you. She's on my staff. And we'll get the information about the caucus and make sure I get connected.
I was not leaving until I got the...
I saw your version. All right. So, deliberately, I thought we still named each other. Deliberately, I said one more question from the group outside. And, and then we're going to go to the bald guy in the orange over here. That's right here.
Hi. I'm Joy Banavolia from Mount Laurel. In six weeks' time, I have become not proud to be an American in regards to all the hate crimes that are popping up all over the place. And I, and today, I believe you addressed one in Etheridge Park, I think. And what our country is going through, I don't hear a lot of Congress really addressing this issue, which has, seems like it's running rampant since he has become the president. Racist, anti-Semitism, xenophobia, and a man who says it's okay to grab a woman's private parts. I may, I'm especially concerned about what is, how we can stop this rhetoric. It started with rhetoric when the nationality of people, the Mexicans, were described as rapists and murderers.
He's not Donald Trump.
Yes, I feel, I...
Keep going.
I don't represent a party. I'm, I'm an independent person. I vote for a person who does the right thing, for an outstanding person. And that's why I've been listening to all your answers tonight. And I'm especially concerned with the deportation threats that seem like we're developing a hollow situation. And I have worked and been friends with many Mexican people specifically, who are scared to death. And the fear that I, that I feel around me from many people is something I don't think feels like America. I don't think we've ever been a country that really was based on fear or had so much, so much going on. And now people have come out of the woodwork and Jewish cemeteries are being desecrated. Law and order seems to be a key word for white supremacy. And my friends who are immigrants are hiding in shadows. And they all are hard-working, loving people I've known. I haven't, I haven't known a violent one. I know we have many violent criminals in this country. So, I wonder where you stand on that rhetoric about the deportations? All this money that would be spent on a law and special ICE agency? I'm not asking a question now. That would be put into that? Millions of dollars that could go to our infrastructure, our schools, people in poverty. How can we justify that? And how can we take a whole group of people and say we're, we're going to push them out and tear families apart?
Joy, let me... Let me try to respond to the things, as we're getting to the end of the night, the things I haven't talked about already. And where you started, hate crimes. They are on the rise. We've had over 100 incidents now with the Jewish cemeteries and threats against the Jewish people. I had lunch today with a rabbi, Rabbi Ben David, out in Burlington County, very large congregation. And that's what we were talking about, is, is how do we address that end? You know, it's not all about laws. Sometimes it's about making statements. It's why I made a statement last week condemning that because there's no place for that. It's also why... It's also why I met with Muslim leaders last week in South Jersey. Because they feel like they're... And we talked about the travel ban and how it impacts their community and how it makes them feel in America. These are Muslim Americans. And I think it's important to stand with them. And I offered to go to their mosque and talk to their people. So, because you're right. I am, you can't talk to the president, but you can talk to your representative. And so, so we're going to do that. Arrange for me to, to go to their mosque and talk to them. It's why the incident you mentioned in Etheridge Park on Saturday night, somebody kicked in the door of Garden State Equality. And the executive director was inside. And I called him Saturday night. Now, it's just a gesture, but I called him because I want him to know that I don't support and that I'll stand with him and the people that Garden State Quality represents. And I want them to know that their congressman doesn't think there's any place in America for that kind of hate. And what I would suggest is, it's not as simple as saying, since one person became president or since this, this is not new. And the world has become less tolerant of people. The whole world has. And we've got to, we've got to make sure that our values, and they should like the travel ban. We have to, we've got to protect our people and honor our values. I'm committed to both of those things. Both of them. And people may not like how I, I feel about the ban. I have security concerns. But I will always try to find where can we do both? Protect our people and, at the same time, honor our values as a nation. That's not easy in this world. There's a lot of danger. But I want you to know that that's what I'm committed to doing. And so, we come to our friend in the orange. It's got to be good. People have been waiting.
Well, it's true. It's on the case, by the way, of Fort River. Just want to say thank you for all your hard work. Especially you have a joint base and your efforts for the case of Lisa Tinker. That'll keep that base open for a long, long time.
Now, he wasn't a plant. Not a plant. Let me, let me just say a couple of words in, in closing. I was thinking about this today. I was driving. I mentioned Jay before. He's around here somewhere. He's a World Warrior Fellow. And we were driving out of Burlington County today. I told him a story. We were talking about the American dream. And I told you I was a businessman and I, I feel like I really lived the American dream. And, and I told him about my first promotion. I was in New York City and I went from being an investigator of insurance clients in the projects, and I was promoted to a manager. And so, you have, you have to look the part. You know, you have to suit up and look the part. I didn't have enough money to buy a, a new suit. But one of Debbie's uncles had just died. And so, I know, I know. It's not so hard, but... But those, those were my first suits as a businessman. My dead uncle's suits, Debbie's uncle's suit. I say that because I want you to understand that that's, that's my life.